This conference will now be recorded.
Thank you. It is 6:30 PM on June 11th, 2020. We will call our meeting to order. This is a conference meeting for the Rome City Council. We have a quorum of council members present. I'll go ahead and for the record, call out your name and if you'll just indicate if you're present. We'll start with Councilmember McCabe.
Here.
Okay. Councilmember Crenshaw?
I'm here.
Okay. Mayor Protem Priest?
Present.
Okay. Councilmember McCowsky?
She is trying to join. She couldn't get the link working. I just forwarded it to her. She will be here shortly.
Okay. All right. Councilmember Eason?
Oh, I'm not here. Yes. Present.
All right. We do have a quorum of council members present. We will go on to our public presentations and input and I'll ask the city secretary if we have any that were submitted by the deadline.
No ma'am, there were not any submitted today.
Thank you. All right. Announcements from mayor and council members. I have one announcement that city hall will open. The lobby will open on Monday, June 14th to the public from 8:00 AM till 2:00 PM. We will have a social distancing measures in place. One person in the lobby and the others will be queued up outside. We'll have appropriate signage for that as well. Are there any other announcements Cynthia that we need to let people know about?
No, that's the one that I was thinking of.
Okay. Are there any announcements from the council members? And we'll go on to the consent agenda. All items under this section are recommended for approval for the consent agenda. These items are of a routine nature and require only brief deliberation by council. Council reserves the right to remove any item on the consent agenda for further deliberation. We have the minutes of the city council regular session dated May 28th, 2020. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Mr. Crenshaw?
I make the motion we approve the consent agenda.
I have a motion. Do I have a second from Ms. Eason? I think I heard you. All right. We have a motion in a second. All in favor, we'll go down the roll call. Councilmember McCabe?
Aye.
Okay. We have an aye. Councilmember Crenshaw?
Aye.
We have an aye. Mayor Protem Priest?
Aye.
We have an aye. Councilmember McCowsky, are you here yet?
Yeah, I just joined. I don't know, we had a problem with software tonight.
Okay. I hear you now. Do you want to cast a vote on the consent agenda?
Yes. Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you. Councilmember Eason?
Aye.
All right. Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have the monthly staff reports. We have the departments, administration, building and development, fire rescue, municipal court, police and public works, as well as the boards, parks and recreation board and the planning and zoning commission meeting minutes. Are there any questions? Do we need to discuss anything on any of those reports? Okay. Then we'll move on to regular agenda, old business, item D. Update discussion and any necessary action regarding municipal complex renovation project. At the last council meeting, council wanted to have some more information, more numbers and hear from Kim Dowdy with the quorum group. And she is on the line tonight to share a little more information about this project, where we are and some of the expectations that we can have going forward. So welcome, Kim. We appreciate you being on the line.
Thank you. Cynthia, if you want to just go ahead and go to the third slide with site plan.
Okay.
We'll just jump straight into that. So we were asked to come back tonight to kind of update council where we are with our schedule as well as with some cost projections where we are on the building. Knowing that the city of Rome will be going out for bond. But we just need to kind of give you an update. So where we are, we are in the middle of our design development phase right now. So we're working with all of our consultants. They are at, one of them is, will actually be in the school tomorrow doing a little bit more follow-up on their survey. And everybody else is running with their documents right now with floor plans, reflected ceiling plans, as well as getting all of our MEP civil and structural. All of them are on board and starting to run with the project. So everything that you see here on the site plan or just like what we showed you last time, nothing has changed to this point. If you want to go to the next slide Cynthia, will be the floor plan. The floor plan has been modified in the lower right-hand corner for some of the offices just due to some of the column locations. So a few things we've had to push and pull a little bit. But the overall type of spaces that we have, locations of those spaces all remain as where we were before. Are there any questions on these before we move forward? Okay. Cynthia, if you'll go on to the next one. Next one is just the rendering, just like you saw it before. We're again just pushing, pushing hard with these documents. Let's go to the next one. Let's kind of talk about our schedule a little bit.
I'm sorry, you were asking about... Did you go back two slides to slide five?
To the floor plan?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Okay. You said that you had to put in posts. I assume those are the black, small black rectangles?
Those are existing precast concrete, concrete columns that were already there. So we just had to go back in and verify a few locations. Some of those were not on the original plan. So they are all shown up as, as they are on the job site right as of right now.
Okay. So this has not changed?
The only, we had to work around a couple of columns because they were existing, but they were not showing up on our preliminary floor plan. But the plan that you see now is accurate with all the column locations and we've just had to work around those. Because we do not want to have to remove those columns and have to re-support the roof system, any of those existing beams just due to the cost. So the plan still worked out nicely, gave, given us all the spaces that we need within offices that were requested from staff.
Okay. Would you go up another, to page three, please?
Okay. Back one? Yes, sir.
Okay. When I look at the, it now says, instead of just community center, it now says senior community center.
That's correct.
But, so you do not have any plans for any renovation for the inside of that facility? The one the mayor's?
We do. When we get further into these documents, I will show you pricing on that. That was not put in our original scope. So that will have to come, you know, with this next phase if the city wants to move forward with that for the final follow-up design on it. For that as well as a fire station, a relift, a facelift on that. But I can show you that in just a few minutes with the, the pricing on it. Just to make sure that the city of Rome is, is in favor of this.
Thank you.
If you'll move forward to the schedule, I think it was three slides up?
Yeah.
One, two more. There you go. So as of right now, if we look at doing a city hall renovation, we are currently in the design development stage. We'll be wrapped up with that no later than July 16th. We'll be in our construction documents heavy with all of our consultants. And that will be wrapping up in September. So we will, if we can go out and have bids due back on October the 15th, which therefore they could hold those bids for 60 days. If we bid anything early now, none of those bids will be held without an extremely high premium on those. So this is the actual due date would be about the 15th. A bond election again is in November. And we could start, if the bond is approved, we could start construction as early as December. 10 months construction, that's going to put, city hall move in to be in next October 2021, which meaning the existing lease of the city hall will expire in November 2021. So it would all fall right into place with perfect timing with those schedules.
So all of these dates are due? All of these dates are due date, not inception dates?
That's correct. Yes. We will be wrapping up each one of these phases at those times. Except for the construction. Construction will start on 12/20 and go for 10 months into 10/21. That is where that range comes from. And we've anticipated about 10 months, no later than 10 months, no longer than 10 months for that, that construction, but interior finish out.
Can you hear us, Mayor Crenshaw? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear us, please?
Yes, I can hear you Kenny.
Okay. My question is, we all know that Murphy, Murphy's Law has a say in everybody's plans. How much of a fudge factor is built into this timeline for when things don't go perfectly well?
Most contractors will have this done well before 10 months. It is interior finish out, so you do have your shell. They will be working on site work in addition while they're working interior of the building. It's not like they're having to erect walls, foundations, roofing. So rain delay should not affect this at all unless there is something major that is discovered, you know, once we get all the demo done. But at this time, you know, with the original structural report, having our structural engineer out, we do not feel like there will be any excessive delays on this project. So they could get it done as early, you know, maybe seven or eight months. But we have 10 months on there as worst case. Typically, yeah.
Okay. They want to make sure because there's always unforeseen things happen.
Absolutely. Typically with a ground-up construction where you have foundation walls, a lot of our projects we can still get done in 12 months. Sometimes, you know, due to rain delays, hurricanes or things like that, you can come in up to, you know, 14, 16 months. But we should not have any of those issues because we are going to be into a fully, fully covered area. Yeah. Okay. Let's move on to the next one for our preliminary cost projection. Looking at this, we worked based off of historic costs and today's values as well as we have been working with two general contractors to come up with these fees. When we're looking at the original on the overall construction cost of this project, we're right now basically at $3.4 million. That right now is including almost $800,000 of contingency costs and fees of general, general overhead for the general contractors. Right now, we're at a 20% construction fee, at a 20% contingency fee on this due to some of the unknowns. We feel that by the time we get through construction documents, we will be able to back off of that probably at least a quarter million dollars. To get the, help to get the costs down. So that's construction cost. When you look at the total project cost, it is upward to 3.9 million. That's allowing that the owners to have a seven and a half percent contingency. It was also allowing for your soft costs for FFNE, third-party inspections, your IT and security, TDLR reviews, as well as construction administration for, for core architects to be able to be on site along with the general contractors when needed. Are there any questions on cost projections at this time?
So, so Kim, this cost protection, this is for the main building? This is not the facelift on the exterior of the fire department or the interior of the community center? Is that correct?
Yes. Yes, ma'am. It is for all of city hall as well as the entire site work. So basically, all the paving and further building, all, everything for the fire, fire station and public works access all the way back behind the building to allow parking, additional canopies in those areas.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. Looks like we've lost. Can we move on? There you go. The next slide will be for the fire station, I believe. That's what we have next. There you go. So we were asked to take a look at the existing fire station to give it a little bit of a facelift. And it's, it's all pre-engineered metal building with your typical R panels that are just painted. So we're looking at going back in and repainting those with a darker color on there. And then the doors, maybe give them a pop of red. That's a, just a fun trend that you're seeing at fire stations as well as give it a little bit more of a facelift with bringing some, just a stone veneer into that. So basically a culture of sticky stone is what it's often called. We recommend, you can see just above those overhead doors in our 3D renderings above, above. And maybe putting in some sun shades to go over those, just to add a little aesthetic value to the building as well as giving some protection of the sun coming in in the evening or early mornings in those areas. So we're, I know we had a one flagpole, so we're showing the two flagpoles as well on this one. And all of the, all the fascia trim and everything around the senior center, community center, we'd recommend just go ahead and painting that, catching that up and maybe putting a new canopy over those, those two entries just so that entry will pop a little bit more. Because all the paving and everything coming up to that building is going to have to be completely redone just to make sure it is all 100% handicap accessible in those areas. You'll go to the next slide that will give us price, cost projections for the fire station uplift. So just to do that building alone will be about a $228,000, what we're projecting for cost, construction cost. We can get the design, design construction estimating contingency down to 10% because there is a lot less unknown happening in that building. And total project, we're looking at 273,000. So that will allow a seven and a half percent owner's contingency as well as design fees that were not already built into this, this part of the project. Is there any questions on the fire station before we move forward?
Okay. This is just the, the exterior, this isn't anything on, on the roof, on top or anything like that, correct?
That's correct. That is correct. It is just basically a face, a true facelift.
Okay.
On that. Okay. Alrighty. So the next one will be for the senior center, community center renovation. It'll be basically an interior upgrade on this building, bringing everything up to code for accessibility, your IACC. So new LED lighting kind of throughout, new finishes, just to kind of give it a, just a warm welcoming feeling for your, for your citizens within Rome. So within that, we're plugging in a $350,000 budget on that. Total project would be $411,000. And that $411,000 will allow just a seven and a half percent design or owner's contingency, design fees as well as some FFNE that we're plugging in to that. Okay. I believe that was it. Unless there's more questions on either of those slides. Does anybody have any questions?
Mayor Protem Priest, do you have questions?
I do. I have some, some questions, some comments and concerns, I guess.
Okay.
So, as I, so let's start with, with the, with the community area and where the seniors would, would be utilizing that area. So in that design process, in the future, we might be considering a completely separate community building. And so is the renovations that you're looking at in that area conducive then to be used in the future by the fire department? Because if that kitchen area is renovated into a kitchen, a full kitchen, then could that, that front space where we meet for meetings today become something that's more useful for the fire department?
Absolutely. I mean, they can use it for multiple reasons. I mean, they can use it for a meeting room, training rooms that they need for themselves as well as for the community. As well as, you know, most of them will have, you know, a nicer dayroom, you know, within those spaces. You know, you know, every, if you ever become a full-time fire station, some of those could be converted into dorm rooms. So there are some opportunities for the future.
Well, one of the reasons I'm asking that is I've, I've been, you know, looking at the financial side of it for quite a while. And one of the things, having had a second home in a small community that had, has a fabulous volunteer fire department effort. Money is, for fire departments these days are on the training side of things. And establishing training centers for some of these volunteer fire departments brings them revenue for their facilities. And in addition to, there are, there are some monies that are available as fire departments, police departments, some, some of those things. Look at the virus impact and being prepared for possible future needs in those spaces. So I'm looking at the funding side of it. And so, I, if we make that into some sort of training area and would be able to receive funds, that would be, have to be shared. It can't be a designated, it wouldn't be able to be designated strictly for senior use. It would have to be open to fire department to use for those training sessions. Does that make sense?
It does to me. I mean, we could definitely set those up as a training room. I mean, it's already a great location right now for our city council. So I mean, you've already got your IT data, everything that you need within that. So just a few things would have to bring it up to code.
Aye. Another question related to the financial aspects of it. I don't know how you do your detailed budgeting as you arrive at those cost analysis for specific areas. But as we look at alternative funding to, for example, to be able to solicit funding, let's just say for furniture. You know, we may be able to get donations and commitments from different furniture areas, different donations and things like that.
Right.
And so is your cost analysis detailed enough that we could divide those into certain categories and, and do work to solicit either funding or actual donations of materials and things like that?
Absolutely. So even for the city hall renovation, if you were looking at that separately, we do have a breakout for FFNE for the fixtures, furnitures and equipment. So we have about a $75,000 plugged into there based off of what we have seen on other, other facilities using.
Okay.
So that, that could go up or down depending on, you know, on the quality. But that right there is a good medium, good medium number. So especially if you're starting getting donations.
Well, it's, you know, and how we, how we look at those opportunities for alternative funding. I also, as I looked at your schedule. And if, you know, if there's a bond election for this, this is my personal opinion and maybe that's what, part of what we need to talk about is that in order to sell and, and get that bond to pass, I believe that our alternative funding planning has to be made public is what our efforts are, what our successes have been thus far, what our hopes are for alternative funding so that we can reduce the need for so much of a bond. When you look at that, it's almost scary. When you look at that bottom line across all of those areas. And, you know, in my mind, I was thinking maybe instead of four million, I was thinking more like two.
Right.
You know, which was thinking on my part probably. But at the same time, I do believe to be successful with the bond effort, that the alternative funding, the planning, the beginning of, the beginning response to that is very likely have some bearing on what kind of vote on the affirmative that we would get. I think that $4 million is going to be scary to the public.
Right. I mean, that's the total project cost. So when you look at just the construction cost, if the city could budget the additional from the 3.4 all the way up to 3.9, the extra half million dollars from another fund or get donations, that might be, you know, a little bit more reasonable for the citizens. It's just something the city would need to look at to see how, how you would like to move forward.
So you, are you in a position, there is a alternative funding committee that's going to meet hopefully soon. Are you in a position to share that detailed budget with us so we can begin to?
Absolutely.
Cypher that, make plans with it?
We do have it broken out with a line items for a construction cost as well as a soft cost.
Okay. Alright. Alright. Thank you.
I can share that with Cynthia and, I can share that with Cynthia.
When I add that up, it's more like 4.6 million.
Well, I didn't have a calculator. I was just talking around numbers there, so.
Okay.
But, but whether it's four million or 4.6, you know, I was a little choky there.
Yeah. The total project is at 3.9 million. The overall construction by itself is 3.4. So you've got a, you've got about a half million dollars in there in soft cost.
Yes. You're not adding in the facelift of the fire station and the senior center?
That's correct.
Center renovation?
That's correct. If you do want to add those in there as well.
Hey, that's kind of a, while we're taking this car out for a spin, we need to go ahead and take that spin.
Okay.
Well, if you look at it, we, we know with the municipal complex, it's going to require the community center to be upgraded. So we definitely have to add those two together because they go hand in hand. Because if we're talking about removing the building where people meet, we need to provide them a place to meet. So the, the facelift on the fire department is secondary to that, that other, the community center need. You know, maybe it's, we, we find a way like Mayor Protem said, to, to raise funds in a different source and a different way to fund a particular portion. And maybe people will be more likely to give or donate toward a particular area as opposed to the project as a whole because they can see, you know, my money went to this part of it.
Well, I think that, you know, we all have our passions and, and I call it legacy giving. Where, where folks want their money to go into the areas that they most love. And I'll give you an example of that. Everybody, everybody knows that Terry graduated from K-State. Well, one of his passions, not while he was at K-State, but has come as he's gotten older, is gardening and that kind of thing. So he makes 50% of his donations to the university in the garden area, the horticultural area of, of the school. And that came from his passion and his love for and what has made him happy during his life. And so I, I think that that's why, how people are motivated for the legacy giving. And so if their passion is to help with the senior effort, for, for example, then you will see people give to that where they might not be so inspired to want to donate to the furniture for the water department. I mean, I'm just, you know, just throwing that out there. So to, to be able to break that up into, you know, micro areas of, of financial consideration, then I think that gives us some room. It also gives us room as we look at not only donations and legacy giving and those kinds of things. It also gives us then specific areas to go out in search of grants and particular, particular kinds of funding that come through application efforts.
Yeah. I would envision that we cap any bond request out at no more than four million. And then we try to find alternative sources, donations, grants, what have you, for any additional over that for the other two buildings. We will find interest in the building itself and preserving the history of the school. So I think there's, there are some people that would be interested in that. There, there are some people in the community center, the seniors, there would be people in giving in that. And then the fire station separately, everybody, as you said, Mayor Protem, has their different passions and things that they want to support. So I think, you know, if we set a goal that we would raise that additional money up to the 600,000, we would find a way to do that. And that's our incentive to get out there and get busy and find that money so we don't have to do a bond, but, but cap it out at no more than four, four million. As Kim said, you know, that... As Kim said, you know, that there's some built in contingency that we may end up for savings. But as Mr. Frenchall said, you know, Murphy's law, if it's going to happen, it's going to happen. So we need to plan for the worst, but hope for the best.
So how much, Michelle, Mayor, I'm sorry, how, how much impact is that going to have on city staff, staff to to, to manage those donations and earmark them and keep them segregated? And clearly, you know, if they, if they donate for, with seniors in mind, they don't want their money going anywhere else. And we know, we need to know what that pot is at all times. So we do, we thought about how we would manage that.
Well, th- those are restricted funds. We can create one account that holds all the restricted funds or we can create separate accounts for each type of restriction. You know, if we say the municipal building itself and any of the contents, the community center, the fire station exterior, we, we can do that. We can break it out however we want. We, we do, staff does already deal with restricted funds right now and has to keep that separate and account for that when it's spent. Make sure it's spent for the purpose that it was restricted for. So staff are first in how to do that. So we would be able to do that.
Well, I would, you know, to look at that schedule and see the, the timeline for if that, you know, is, is basically a November election for us to be able to respond and with factual information on our commitment to do that. You know, we need to get, we need to get jumping here.
Yes, yes. And, and just, I know the number is big. You know, I, I figured it would be in the three billion range just based on some of the very preliminary estimates that we were looking at at $250 a square foot, an 11,000 square foot building, you know, adding on the community center and the exterior of the fire department, of course, adds some cost to that. So I, I'm not surprised. It is a big number. It's a big project. It's, it's a legacy for our town. But I, I think it's something that can bring the community together and something that we can be proud of. But Kim, can you let us know to just kind of put that four million in perspective or that 4.6 million in perspective? This is a renovation of existing buildings. If we decided this price tag we think is a little high, maybe we can do just a new building. What would that look like? Knowing that this is really the only piece of land of the right size for a building that we would need? What would be your cost estimate for a new, new construction?
We did a, two more slides on that. So Cynthia, could you switch back to that and we can show, show counsel? There's two hidden slides at the very end. You may need to stop that and go to your right to where you see your thumbnails to your right, if you can cancel.
Yeah, they were showing up. Hold on.
Yeah, so if you click on, click on those right two and then unhide.
Oh, I saw what you did.
Yeah, if you right-click it.
Yeah.
Actually, there you go. I'll say, look, looks like we can see it right there though. They'll be fine without having to go in slide mode.
Can you see it now?
So we, we look at two different options, one for the renovation as well as one for the construction. If you look all the way through construction schedule, the proposed schedule for new construction, you will see, we will not be done with completion of construction until March or April of 2022, which will put us, what is that about a three, four, five, five, six months beyond the expired lease on this? If you go to the next slide there, we're looking at total construction, one more.
No, I know, I'm still trying to unhide it, hold on.
There you go. No, it's fine, it's showing.
Okay.
So the construction cost of that would be 4.1 million. Again, this is just for the city hall. We're using the same square footage on that, 11,100 square feet. That'd be 4.1 million versus a 3.9 million. And then the total construction cost would be $510,000 because we'd have to go back through design. But this schedule that I gave you, so all of this is considerably higher because you're having to start from ground. We're doing a full demo. You'll have new foundation, new walls, new roof, well, new structure. Where here, we're all, we're going all in with that already, with that already included. But if you go back to the schedule, that's if we start this construction basically tomorrow if we were given direction on that. So any, anything delay between now and then, if we waited till bond was approved or anything else to start design, you just keep pushing that schedule on out. Is there any questions on new versus renovation?
Okay. So thoughts on, on this council? What are your thoughts on new versus renovation? Is, is new something we even want to entertain any discussion on? Or do we feel that the renovation preserves history of the school and some intrinsic value that is more important than having that brand new building with a little bit higher price tag? Yes, Mr. Easton?
Um, I'm actually expecting to have a brand new building on the inside. Okay? We're going to drop four million dollars on that, on that building. I'm going to expect, I'm going to expect that very old building to look like new on the outside and actually be new on the inside. Okay? Now granted, you'll still have, you know, the majority, the majority of the existing walls are going to be there and you're going to see a lot of historic, you know, aspects of it. And people will remember that they sat in that classroom or, you know, I remember doing such and such. But I'm expecting it to be new. Okay? So to me, go with the, go with the four million dollar option to renovate, not the five million dollar to demo and build new.
Other council, are you of the same opinion?
I'm myself, I'm pretty much of the same opinion. You know, talking with a lot of people around the city over the years, you know, that building does mean a lot to a lot of people here. So renovating it, it really seems to be something that everybody is looking forward to doing, having done.
Agreed. I thi- I think you are correct. The people that I've talked to or, or comments that I've seen, heard, expressed, it sounds like something everyone can get behind, although it does come with a price tag. But it sounds like something that quite a few people can support and we can be proud of when it's done. You know, we can invite people to come to our town. Look, look what we've done here, look what we have. We can have meetings here. We're no longer having to go to other places for these things. We're inviting people here because we're proud of what we have, we're proud of our heritage.
Exactly. I mean, everything comes with a price tag. It's how we manage it and how we put it together and how we present it to the people of the city. You know, because this is their building that we're renovating.
Correct. It will, will live long after all of us are no longer serving the city. So yes. Okay, so, so we can take new construction off the table. It sounds like everybody's okay with that. We'll just take that off any discussion. Okay. How do you feel about the three different pieces of the project? Do we feel that all three are necessary? Not necessary? Mr. Easton, you, you said we might as well get everything fixed while we're, we're going through the, the construction pains. Does everybody feel similar to that?
Yeah. Mayor, like you said, if we, we're going to have to demo the current senior citizen buildings and we need to have a place for them to be able to meet as well as use it for training, the fire department and all that. But also if we're going to build a new city hall on one side and renovate community center on the other side, it makes sense that we got to uplift the fire department in the middle because you got to make it all look like it goes together. So I think if we're going to go ahead and do this, we need to do it all at the same time. Make sure, make everything look.
Agreed. And that, that makes sense.
I'm pretty much in the same opinion, you know, that if we're going to demo the old senior center, we're definitely going to have to have some place for the seniors to go. Because over the years, you know, it gets quite populated. We have various events that happen on the holidays and, you know, we have a crowd that shows up just about every Saturday, or excuse me, every Friday for lunch.
Right. Kim, while we have you on the line, as far as the community center, can we prioritize that in the construction sequence to get that done sooner in, in the timeline rather than toward the end? Because we've got a time, the parking lot, any demo in the parking lot and where they're going to go. Is, is that something you've kind of factored in to the thinking?
Absolutely. And that's, that's something we will work with the general contractor when the bid has been awarded about that phasing, the sequence of the phasing. So once they demo that out, we'll, or that, or they'll come in, they'll go ahead and renovate the, the community center prior to the demo. That way they still have access to it. We will still have some secured parking for them as well as, you know, we'll still have to have access for the fire trucks to come in and out. So more than likely, I would visualize them using the far drive, create the far drive to the left of the school first and have that as their construction access, keeping it safe for the fire department as well as the citizens to take ownership, you know, or still use their existing building while they renovate the other. So once they demo, they could go ahead and move in, just like what we're anticipating for city hall. We want city hall done before your lease is up so you can move in. So I would expect the same thing for the seniors too. But again, that will be just part of sequencing with the general contractor.
Okay.
And during the pre-bid meetings, we'll, we'll definitely go over that in depth with all the contractors fitting the project, just to make sure everybody's on board before they turn and done.
I think, I mean, that's a, that's a standard, that's a standard technique that civil engineers do. I mean, all you have to do is look at, when there's new road construction that comes in, you keep existing roads moving and they
Absolutely.
And you can see how they sequence in things to make it work. Because yes, the seniors need to have someplace for each Friday. And, you know, crazy things like the P and Z and the park and rec board, they're going to have to have places to meet. So yes, we definitely need to get that senior center, community center set up, you know, very early so that we can disrupt things as little as possible. But also I think it would provide a wonderful a wonderful taste to our citizens so that you get that senior center, community center done first so they can come in and they can see, hey, look, this is what they can do. This is what they're doing. Look how fabulous this is now. So that, I mean, people can get a taste of it very early on.
Right. And it, it might help promote people to give once they do see something tangible and, and what a sample of the building will look like. So you're right, that can definitely be a plus. And then we can, you know, talk about things like when the municipal complex is done, a ribbon cutting, a, a homecoming for alumni who attended. You know, we can plan some events that will generate interest in the community and bring us together. Okay, so it sounds like everybody wants to look at this as a package, if you will, with the correct sequencing to get the priority done first. I, I I, I think, Kim, that you said you've only been working on the main building design, that the community center design is an additional design?
That's correct. So yeah.
Agreement. Okay.
So we, we will need to come out and do that.
Okay. Can you, can you work on an amendment to the agreement that we have on the main building that would have the cost for each of those two other projects so we can bring that back?
Absolutely.
Okay, that would be great.
I can have that to you hopefully next week.
Okay.
We'll get a, we'll get a final approval of that.
Yeah, and then we can bring it to council at the next meeting for them to consider action on that. Okay. I have spoken with our financial advisor and gotten some feedback on the bond, if it ends up being, you know, the four million dollar bond. And the, the thing about where Rome is sitting now is that in the timing and the sequence, you know, kind of like we just talked about with opening the senior community building, having that ready. The timing and sequence of when we're paying off two of our existing bonds correlates with when, assuming a bond would pass in November, when the payments would be due for this new bond. So we, we may have some overlap of one year with two being paid off and, and one coming on to replace those two. So I, I really feel good about where it would land financially, assuming it passes that, you know, we're not just stacking more bonds on top of more bonds on top of more bonds. We're, you know, paying things off and then investing in new projects going forward, these long-term projects. So more information will be forthcoming on that as we get to some more information from them. Mr. Easton?
You're muted. You need to unmute.
How was my mute test? Did it work?
There you go.
Okay. Thank you. The water tower bond, the bond, okay? That was, that was before my time here, but does anybody know how much that water tower bond was?
In, in total, I don't know off the top of my head. I can get that number for you. That, that's one of the, the, the bonds that will be paid off. The, the 2024, 2025 will be the two years where we have two things paid off. And we will just be down to the one payment for the east side wastewater treatment plant expansion.
I was just wondering if that was a, you know, one million, two million, four million dollar bond?
Yep. I will, I will get that number for you and I can bring, bring that to the next council meeting.
Now, Kim, your schedule on the presentation, and by the way, Cynthia, will you please send that presentation out to everyone? Thank you.
Yes.
On the slide that gave your schedule, I believe you said the design would be complete in late July? Is that correct?
Okay, can you go back? That's our design development. That's just some early preliminary MEP structural civil input on that. Once we get that, we are all on board with their design work with ours. We'll go straight into construction documents on that. So if you could go up to the, the renovated one.
Yeah. Late reaction for whatever reason.
Yeah, it's mid-July. So the design development, those, what, what else is going to be included in that design development delivery?
Design development is typically going to be your floor plan, your reflective ceiling plan, your floor finish plan, interior elevations, exterior elevations, a few wall sections that we will have going through the building as well as basically a single line diagrams for your mechanical. You'll have a, a preliminary lighting layout as well as your plumbing, plumbing fixture layout as well as a civil work. So and then structural, typically, typically structure for a DD set will only be, you know, your foundation plan and your framing plan. They're not really having to do much here. They're just really confirming everything that we've got. So we're just kind of keeping them in our back pocket if we need them.
I'm just thinking to, to ask people to donate, to ask people to vote for a bond. People like pictures. I like pictures. Okay? I, I, I want to have those pictures available, right? And like, like with the senior center, community center, I'd love to have a picture in there that says, and this is what the kitchen's going to be. You know, and I'd love to have a picture in there that says, and this is what the kitchen's going to be, you know, and so that it's like, oh my gosh, look at what we're doing, you know, this is, this is gonna be something really nice. So, pictures.
Typically, what we will, typically, what we will do for, uh, for bonds for the presentation will be similar to, Cynthia, if you'll go just one, really, those three renderings that you see, floor plans and the renderings of the exterior of the school. So, we will have colored renderings in there, we'll dress these up even more than what you see here. Then we'll also cut some, uh, renderings on the interior of the building. You know, we'll maybe show the auditorium area to show how that's gonna be turned into a mixed-use space. So, you know, we're gonna have people in there actually with the rendering and then show what we can do with the fire station as well as the, uh, senior center.
Wonderful.
Just to get some excitement going.
Okay, so that is, uh, just a little over a month from today.
Yeah, so, I mean, that's, well, that's for the city hall, we'll have to get our proposal and everything and our team on board for, uh, the fire station as well as the community center, but we are pushing hard on the others to try to make that happen. When do you start doing, putting your presentations together for the bond package?
Um, probably mid to late summer, beginning of September. Okay. Anything else on that agenda item or did we answer questions? Did we provide you with the information that you needed at this point? Okay.
I've got the, I've got the information if that's, that's my question or counsel, I'm not sure.
Oh, oh, uh, uh, yeah, that's for, for counsel, yes, please. If you have questions for Kim. Kim, we appreciate you putting this together and, and being on the call tonight. Um, and we are definitely excited on this project, um, just be some movement.
Yeah, you're quite welcome. So, I'm here whenever you guys have any more questions. All right, thank you.
Have a good evening.
Thanks.
You too. All right, bye-bye.
Bye. All right, uh, we'll go on to, uh, regular agenda, new business item. E, F, and G are similar, but I need to, for the record, point, point out each one of them. E is discussion and any necessary action regarding a proposed site plan for a new residential home proposed to be legally described as Bell Heights Block One, Lot Four, as requested by Structured Building Group Incorporated. Item F is discussion and any necessary action regarding a proposed site plan for a new residential home proposed to be legally described as Bell Heights Block One, Lot Five, as requested by Structured Building Group Incorporated. Item G, discussion and any necessary action regarding a proposed site plan for a new residential home proposed to be legally described as being Bell Heights Block One, Lot Six, as requested by Structured Building Group. In your packet, you have some information on all three of these, um, items. And I'll turn it over to the city administrator to kind of give us a little bit more and tell us, uh, what happened with P and Z um, and, uh, staff, um, or view.
Sure, these, um, as you, council members, as you know, you've already approved, um, the final plat and lots one, two, and three. So, these are, um, lots four, five, and six. Um, I've landed here on six. All the department heads have reviewed and provided comments, uh, which, uh, the engineer has incorporated into, um, the site plans. P and Z recommended approval of all three. There was a question that was brought up during P and Z. Um, you will see this drainage easement on Lot Six right here. I don't know if you can see my cursor or not. Um, they were, the question there, first of all, you should know that this is actually going to be like a, a channel, a swell. So, it will be visible from the naked eye, right? It's not just flat ground. And so, the question was raised, well, will they be able to build in it? And no, on typically on easements, you don't build in them. And if you did, you would be liable for if any, if the city needed to get in there and do anything, um, and there was something there, the city wouldn't be liable to replace anything within that easement because that's what an easement is for. Um, so, that question was brought up. Um, and we actually went ahead and added a note to it, and it's right here, that makes it very clear. So, it will be on file with the city, the homeowner will have a copy of the site plan and it will be very clear that they should not build in this area. Are there any questions on that?
I noticed there's a, it's noted that there's a fifteen-foot sewer, uh, sewer line easement within that also. Uh, is that a, a functioning sewer right now or is that, uh, just something that, uh, is, was there previously?
No, that, that's included within the whole drainage easement, yes. It's inside the forty-foot, yes.
What I'm asking, is that a functioning sewer?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Easton?
I believe this falls under a ministerial activity, so since staff has recommended, or since it has met all of staff's needs and the P and Z has recommended approval, I'd like to make a motion that we approve all three of these.
All right. All right, I have a, a motion on all three to approve. We have a second on that from Councilmember McCauskey. So, uh, we'll go for a vote on all three. If you don't agree on any one, please note that when I call your name. Councilmember McCabe?
Aye.
Okay, Councilmember McCabe is an aye. Councilmember Crenshaw?
This picture's frozen or he's holding really still?
Okay, we, we will skip you for now and, and so you get your technical difficulty worked out and go on to Mayor Pro Tim Priest.
Aye.
And Mayor Pro Tim Priest is an aye. Councilmember McCauskey?
Aye.
And an aye from Councilmember McCauskey. Councilmember Easton?
Aye.
We have an aye from Councilmember Easton. Councilmember Crenshaw, are you on the line?
There he is, I seen.
Come on, that, my, my connectivity is spotty at best, so.
Okay, i- i- how, how do you vote on the matter for-
The favorite.
I believe I heard you were in favor of that. Does everybody concur with that? Okay, all right, thank you, Councilmember Crenshaw. All right, motion carries on the three items. All right, uh, last item, item H is the presentation and discussion regarding the proposed budget for fiscal year 2020 and 2021. Um, you were given a copy of this earlier today. Um, quite a bit of work has gone into putting this together. I want to remind everyone who may be on the phone call that this is a proposal that's been put together from the input from staff, um, from existing agreements, uh, things like that. And it's been built, um, with, uh, revenue projections for council to consider. Councilmember Easton? I think you're testing your mute again.
Sorry, then, Deb. I received two copies. Um, is there a difference between the two? Because they, they're, the size of the PDFs were significantly different.
They are the same document. I received an outlook error saying that it did not go out because of the size. So, I optimized it so the color was taken out, but it is the exact same information.
So, if you received the first one, you wanna keep that because it has color?
It looks prettier, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, you wanna have a version that has page numbers A through W. So, if you received a document with A through W noted in the right-hand corner, then you've got the document that we're going to go over this evening. All right, um, so, we'll start overall, your first page, page A. Um, this is an overall, uh, summary of what the detail is that we're going to go through. Um, tonight is your opportunity to let us know if you don't like something, if you feel like something should be included. Um, i- i- any, this, this is, is your document to tell us your thoughts on, um, we, we will incorporate any, any input that you give us this evening. We'll finalize the final proposed budget after this meeting and that one will be put out for presentation and public comment at the next meeting. And we'll, we'll get input to see what the public, um, opinion is of our proposed budget. So, uh, overall, um, for all the departments combined, uh, income projection of three million, six hundred and twenty-one thousand, three hundred and fifty-three dollars and forty-six cents. Uh, total expense projection is three million, six hundred and twenty dollars and five hundred and eight, three million, six hundred and twenty thousand, five hundred and eighty-three dollars and eight cents. Sorry, it's taking me back to grammar school and, and saying all the, the numbers right. Um, net-net, that, that leaves us with, uh, a cushion of seven hundred and seventy dollars and thirty-eight cents. Um, before we get into the detail, I'll give you just kind of the, the big changes. Yes, Mr. Easton?
Does this take into consideration that, um, our oil, gas lease revenue is down significantly and, um, potentially reduced, um, sales tax from the impact of the COVID nineteen and self-distancing? Um, have you considered that in this estimate?
Yes, so, we, we have went with what the appraisal district provided as the preliminary values with the reduction that they have proposed. Um, the caveat with that is they're not the final numbers. There are people that have the right to protest the appraised values that the appraisal district has assigned. So, our one hundred and fifty-nine million dollar taxable property value can go up, it can go down. It depends on what the appraisal appeals outcome is. But we've based this budget on the preliminary projection. Um, as far as sales tax, we have been watching that very closely. We got word yesterday, um, our sales tax deposit yesterday for the month of April, which is the first full month of the COVID, um, pandemic, was actually more than what we average. Uh, it was seventy-one thousand dollars. We, we've been averaging sixty thousand a month. So, we actually came in higher and that's been the trend continuously, um, for, for many years now. We've been trending upward. So, uh, we were pleasantly surprised to see that, uh, COVID has not had a negative impact on the city of Rome's sales tax, although many other cities who rely heavily on sales tax have seen a decline. We did not see that decline. So, we have projected this budget on a trend that sales tax will continue with, um, an increase of seven point eight percent over the current year's budget. Our actual sales tax received compared to our budget that we expected to receive for this current year is trending higher. So, I feel very comfortable that a seven point eight percent increase this upcoming budget year over the current budget year is, is very realistic. It's not over anticipating revenue. Um, so, that is a, a good position to be in. Um, so, the, the last hurdle that we would have to jump over would be the appraisal districts, um, the appeals. So, if our, uh, property tax base decreases from a hundred and fifty-nine million, then we will have to take this budget and go back and make some adjustments. Any, any questions, concerns on those two items?
When will we know that?
July fifteenth.
In a month, thanks.
Yes, we, we will know that before it has to be finalized. All right, so, um, as, as most years, we, we project, um, the expenses and the revenue are pretty, pretty close, uh, not a lot of wiggle room. Uh, the, the department heads presented an initial budget, um, with their request that was, uh, not a balanced budget. And so, we were able to go through, um, evaluate, you know, the actuals, evaluate the contracted rates with things. Um, there are a few items that we're looking at, some proposals to change, um, service providers, to find some cost savings. Um, and so, they were able collectively, we were collectively able to, to cut out four hundred thousand in our initial submission for requests, um, from every area of the city. So, um, we feel like we have examined this quite closely to get to the numbers where we're at. Year over year on the budget, we're projecting revenue to be five point nine percent more than last year's budget revenue. Um, and expenses would be five point nine as well on an increase. So, let's go on to, um, from page A to page B. This is just, uh, for your information, this is the current year's budget numbers. Wanted to have that so you could compare the budget, uh, to the budget. Page C, if you'll scroll to that one, this is where we actually are in our spending as of June first. Um, so, you could take page C, compare it to page B, um, that is budget versus the actuals. So, you can see, um, you know, we're, we're to the good right now, two hundred and eighty-five thousand, six hundred and four dollars. Um, w- we still have four more months in, in this budget year. Uh, there are several expenses that we do pay that are larger in the months of August and September. So, you can't necessarily say, you know, this is equal to eight months average. Um, there are some payments that just the timing of it, uh, can, can change that. So, um, if you compare actual revenue to the budget revenue, you know, we're, we're quite lower on that. But, y- you know, that's because we've got these four months of payments and expenses that, that's still collected in there. All right, so, let's go on to the page D. We'll start with the departments and just work our way through this. Um, I, I will hit on things. If you have a question or if you need more information, just jump in. Um, these numbers are, are familiar with most of this, but if, if I go too fast or if I'm not going quick enough, uh, just kind of give me your feedback on, uh, on, on anything to see. Okay, so, page D starts-
Can I interrupt you for just a second?
Yes, y- y- you can. Uh, city attorney is on the line, um, and, and if you do not see-
And the meter is running and you had talked about cutting that meter off.
Yes, we, we did. At this point, we're just discussing this, we will make no decisions tonight and I think we can, uh, forego some of the legal expenses. So, we appreciate you being on the line.
All righty, guys, good night, see you.
Thank you.
Good night, thank you.
Michelle, I'm, I'm called, just called in, I lost my computer connectivity.
Okay, so, I'm glad to have you back on the line. We're just about to start on the administration budget.
Yeah, I've been listening.
Okay, great. Um, so, just going through this, the, the, the top part, uh, of the page is the income lines, franchise fees, uh, Encore Atmos, the, these are things that are, you know, we've had these for many years, so, we budgeted that the same. Uh, maintenance and operations and, and INS debt service, these two numbers added together, these are your property tax numbers. This is the revenue, what that covers. Um, when people say, where does my money go for my property tax? That's these two lines here added together. M and O is maintenance and operations, that's for the ongoing, um, expenses for the city. INS debt service is, is what it sounds like, it's to pay the debts that we're obligated to pay. Um, so, uh, that is, um, property tax, sales tax, uh, the current budget, seven hundred and sixty-five thousand, uh, we are projecting eight hundred and twenty-five thousand. Um, as we said, we, we received notice yesterday that we have, uh, a deposit in the bank of seventy-one thousand. So, our actuals, um, that five hundred and eighty-six thousand is actually that plus-
So our actuals, that five hundred and eighty-six thousand is actually that plus seventy-one thousand. So we're still trending to, we expect to be higher than budget. So we projected higher on our sales tax revenue for the upcoming budget year. Interest income is, is just minimal that we aren't on the bank accounts that we have. Miscellaneous income, this has previously been recorded in other income. But really, it, it's more just a accounting separation. Miscellaneous income, open records request, notary fees, copies, things like that. Small fees that we, we charge, so there's not significant revenue there. So total revenue, one point six million in the administration department. The administration department as a whole, it's part of the general fund. The general fund includes administration, building and development, municipal court, police and fire, as well as parks. So within all of those other departments, when they project their budget, if they don't balance within their department, the general fund funds the difference in any of those accounts. So then as a whole, all the general fund accounts will balance together. Public Works is a standalone entity, so the revenue and expenses in Public Works have to be looked at separately. And they have to balance within themselves. So any questions on the revenue side of administration? Alright, we'll, we'll go on to the expenses. The accounting fees, we budgeted flat, same that we paid for several years. The next line, lease payment, we're not still on page D. This is of note because we, we heard from Kim Doughty in Quorum earlier on the municipal complex building. Our, our lease in the building has been prepaid this year, so we're good until the end of our lease. We decided to put in a contingency, as Mr. Crenshaw said, Murphy's Law. Something might happen, you know, it, it does. We've put in six months of lease payments as a contingency in case we don't meet the deadline that we think we're going to meet. We hope we don't have to use this. If we stay within that deadline, then this money is just savings. And I would suggest we put that in the bank to we're paying off the municipal complex bond. So the, the next line, bond interest expense, thirty thousand, one fifty-two. That goes to the twenty sixteen refunding bond that will be paid off in twenty twenty-five, as well as the tax, twenty seventeen tax note series, which will be paid off in twenty twenty-four. We've got the bond principal for the same. We separate out those so we can tell what's principal, what's interest. The next line, contract labor, this one is nine thousand is what we are putting in for this year versus three thousand for the previous budget year. This is mainly, we are looking at managed IT services to help us keep up with the challenges in the IT world. We all did cybersecurity training recently. That's something that we need to, you know, we don't have an in-house IT person, so a managed service, we think is, is where we're at as a city. So that's that contract labor. Education and training, we bumped up and you'll see that in all departments, that we want to make sure that our staff maintain certifications that they have and we're also keeping up with trends in their respective fields and keeping staff their abilities and certifications to the level we need as the city grows. The next line, note payments. This was, we, remember we approved financing items that are, were needed long-term. Long-term being the next, you know, five to seven years. Administration received laser fish and computers that needed to be replaced. That, that way we will be able to electronically scan all the, the city documents. It will make it much easier to meet open records requests and it's, you know, for your disaster recovery, if we've got electronic documents in addition to paper ones. That, that's what we need to have in place. So that's just the first note payment. You will see some of our note payments in the police department and the fire department for their financing items as well. Office supplies, some of these are self-explanatory postage. Property tax service, that is what we pay quarterly to Wise County Appraisal District and Wise County for the services that they provide for us that we do not do in-house. And that, that is negotiated each year based on their budget and allocated among all the cities in the county. Credit card fees, we have a small amount of credit card fees within administration. Dees and subscriptions, thirty thousand, that's up just a little bit. Made up of, of several different software subscriptions. We have a comment from someone? Okay, we're, we're on page E now. Insurance, property liability, workers' comp, these are quarterly payments. Each of the departments will have that line item. Insurance, medical, dental, retirement, your medical and dental, our rep indicated that, you know, COVID has caused quite a bit of expense in the medical realm. We don't know what our benefits will do yet. We're, we're a little far out because we have a December one. That's our renewal period starts December one. We won't know till September what the actual number is for our health benefits, dental, vision. But he said ten percent would be a good number to budget. So as long as we don't come in more than ten percent when we get our renewal amounts, then, then we'll be good on that number. Retirement, that's the full retirement rate to, to keep our pension fully funded. So you'll see that within every department with employees. Legal notices, that's, that account fluctuates and changes from year to year. So we budgeted closer to what we actually have spent this year. Legal fees, we budgeted flat at ninety thousand. Building maintenance, we brought down a little bit as we're building a municipal complex. We should be spending less on buildings that we're not going to stay in, other than basic maintenance. Telephone and internet, we have significantly decreased the budget on this. This is one of the items. City administrator's been looking at some options for bundling our internet phone services and getting VoIP service and fiber optics. So the projections for all the departments, we've decreased the telephone and internet based on this. We will bring more information to another council meeting for you to consider this item. City elections, we budgeted higher because due to COVID, the May twenty twenty election was moved to November twenty twenty. So within the next budget year, we will have two elections to pay for in November twenty twenty and then May twenty twenty-one. So that's the reason for the increase on that. Utilities, gas and electric, those average about two thousand a month, so we left it flat. Hiring and testing expenses, these are just pre-employment screenings that whenever we have turnover, we've got to do those to make sure we get qualified staff onboard. Salaries, wages, overtime, unemployment, Medicare, social security, those, those are all your salary expenses. We'll have those within each department. Overall, for employees and compensation, we plan for a four percent increase, up to a four percent increase, with two percent of that being cost of living and then two percent of that being merit based on their performance. And that's under the discretion of their supervisor on the merit portion. Any questions on that? Alright, the last two items on page E, these are the inter-company transfers within the general fund. One is to the fire department for a hundred and thirty-two thousand, one is to the parks for eighteen thousand. The fire department one is made up of the forty-eight thousand annually that the city has allocated to the fire department for as many years as I've been involved with the city. And then also the fifty thousand dollar apparatus replacement program that was instituted a couple of years ago to replace the aging fleet and plan for needs as they come up. And then the, the payroll for the part-time fire chief. So those three numbers add up to that hundred and thirty-two. For the parks, they've got eighteen thousand and that's made up of ten thousand that is for projects that are to be determined. You know, we have the, the Parks Master Plan Committee going on and they're working on, on that plan and, and ideas for, for things going forward. For recreation parks, for our city. And so they wanted to allocate that to a future project that will be forthcoming once we get that final document from the Parks Master Plan Committee. The eighteen thousand also includes maintenance, two thousand dollars maintenance on the parks, a thousand dollars utilities for the eternal flame at the Veterans Park. Another four thousand for family park, you know, we've got to replace the mulch and if we need to, you know, upgrade anything, that's kind of an ongoing item. And then Veterans Park, a thousand dollars and that typically covers the, the roses and the annual trimming and caring for the, the roses and shrubs that are at the Veterans Park. You'll go on to page F. The, the last couple of items, technology, we've bumped that up to sixty-five hundred. That includes five thousand dollars for a website upgrade, as well as fifteen hundred dollars for other technology items that come up throughout the year, you know, a printer can go out and things like that. The website is in sore need of upgrading and so our city administrator's been investigating different ways to, to improve our website and get, get people to help us with that. And then going forward, staff will be able to manage that once we get the website upgraded. The, the next line banquet service awards, we brought that up just a little bit. This is the annual employee volunteer appreciation and recognition event. You know, we, we have quite a few employees and volunteers and, and families and, and the cost, you know, to do this in-house on city property, it's still, it takes a little bit of money to do this to, it's a small way we can recognize our employees and tell them how much we appreciate what they do for the city. Sometimes it's a thankless job, but we do appreciate them. And then the library support is budgeted the same at six hundred. This is the annual support for that library to maintain accreditation for their grant funding. If they don't have this from the city, then they're not eligible for many grants. So that concludes administration. Any questions on that at this point? Alright.
Oh, Mayor, I do want to tell you, I appreciate the far right column of your detailed notes. It does make this far easier to read and understand. Thank you.
You're welcome. If you do see anything you want more clarification on, please let me know because this, this is for you, but it's also for the public to understand where the spending is and what it includes in each line item.
It looks like we came in under, under budget on a lot of items from, from the, from the, this past year's budget.
Yes, we, we tried to identify anywhere we could, we could get some savings because we have other things that need to be addressed. So the staff have been very diligent. Building and development is on page G. We have health permits to start out with. That one, we just budgeted a small increase to eleven thousand. The hotel occupancy tax.
Hey, Michelle?
Yes, sir.
Just, sorry, one last thing on, when you present this to people, when they look at these columns and they see the ones with parentheses, the over and under, that they know that those numbers that came in under, that money will be rolled into the next budget year, correct? Like you came in under on technology, fourteen hundred dollars. That means we, that's money we did not spend, correct?
Correct, that's, that's money we did not.
That money, that's money that we just budgeted for, that we have in the bank, that we're not spending it, it'll just stay in there as a part of what the new projection will be, the new budgeted amount. Out of that sixty-five hundred dollars for technology, fourteen hundred of it was from the past, the previous budget that was not spent, correct?
Well, there, there's really two, two answers, yes and no. So as far as the technology, the fourteen forty-four eighty-one that you're seeing that we haven't spent, well, we're actually over on that one. That one's a bad example. You, you need to find what's the negative. But yes, it, it's money that is still in the bank, assuming that we've earned all the revenue that we projected to earn. That money will be in the bank. When we look at the budget year for next year, we, we look at the revenue that's coming and the new revenue that's coming in during that budget year from October one, twenty twenty to September thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. And that's what we base our budget on, the new revenue.
Yeah. It's just hard to explain this to the people that aren't, never do budgets. And that they know, hey, this money just isn't going to be, it's not wasted. It was there in case we needed it because you never know, but it'll just, it ain't just that you're, but we're just going out spending it.
Right, if, if it's sitting in the bank, for example, if we have five thousand that we didn't spend in the bank this year in our checking account. The council can say, please reallocate what's left in our checking, the savings from this year and roll it into savings because we want to build up our savings. So we could do that. But then we still have the budget with our new revenue projections and our new expense projections that are separate from that. So, so yes, I think you've got it spot on. I just want to make sure everybody understands.
It's just kind of hard to explain it when everybody starts looking at these columns and seeing, explaining what the over-under is. If they're looking at that, if it's in parentheses, that means we spent less than we projected.
Right.
Well, the actual cost was under what we budgeted for, so we saved the money there. And, and that's what, that's a good way to put it, is we saved money. Wherever you see those parentheses on the over and under, that's money we saved. We did not, didn't have to spend, so.
Right, for, for expenses, yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, I'll shut up now.
No, and, and if there's a, a, this, this is what I do for a living, so it all makes sense to me. But for the general public, if there is an easier way to explain it and you guys have some ideas on, on presentation to the public, I would be happy to entertain, you know, like.
Well, most of the people in the general public just want to know the bottom line. Because, but I don't see, there's no other way to present this, I don't think, better than the way it's presented now. Because if you've ever, you know, you do budgets and you look at stuff like this, it's, you can see, but the general public just wants to know, hey, are we broke or did we save money or did we come in under budget or over budget? That's pretty much what happened.
Yes, and, and page A is the best one for people to look at if they want the Eagles IQ and don't want the details.
Yeah, okay.
Alright, okay, so we, we got to the hotel occupancy tax. This is hotel motel. We budgeted that flat with COVID. You know, we just weren't thinking that that one was going to change significantly, so we left that flat. Animal registration, I, I bumped that up from three hundred to eighteen hundred and the note on the side says budget for three hundred registered animals at six dollars a animal. We're going to increase our registration roundup to gain compliance on the registration. I, I don't know how many animals we have in town. I estimated three hundred. If we have five hundred and fifty utility accounts, I figured, you know, maybe more than half of those have at least one pet. If we take that money and then we earmark the money from the animal registration, we use that for animal control. And if you look down a couple of lines under the expenses, you see animal control has been bumped up from a thousand to eighteen hundred. I think if we get, get the program going where we make sure that people understand their animals have to be registered every year to prove that they're vaccinated and meet the code requirements for animals, that we can use that registration money to help control. that we can use that registration money to help control the problems that we all know we have with animals. Eighteen hundred dollars is not a lot of money. You know, maybe we have five hundred animals. You know, until we get closer to a hundred percent compliance on all the pets that we have, you know, I won't know what that number is. But I think we've got at least start making strides on this one because we all know it's something we need to address and do a better job with. So that is my proposal on that one to generate some more funding to start addressing that a little more. Back up to two lines, permits and plats. We budgeted, we've increased that significantly from fifty thousand in the previous budget year to a hundred and ten thousand for the upcoming budget year. This increase, we based it on conversations that we've had and are having with Rowan V Development on their timeline for plating and starting construction on their phases. And so the plating does come to the city room even though they are in the ETJ. So we will charge them the fees that are in our fee schedule for plating. So we anticipate that we'll see some significant revenue in this next budget year on plating from Rowan V. If you look at our actuals, actuals are at sixty thousand and that doesn't include Rowan V. So we've seen quite a bit of activity under permits and plats in this current year. So that's been a nice increase over what we thought we were going to get. If you scroll down further, the next line that's significant engineering services, we've gone from fifty-five thousand to seventy thousand. The seventy thousand is for the remainder of the master thoroughfare plan. Remember, council approved to spend fifteen thousand in this current budget year to get started on that. So we need to finish that up in this upcoming budget year. And then there'll be normal engineering costs for site plan reviews and street projects. And so we're estimating probably, you know, fifty thousand is for the normal activity that we're going to see for engineering costs. The next line inspections, we budgeted twenty thousand in the current year. We're actually at twenty-four thousand. So we bumped up our budget projection for next year to thirty thousand because we believe we're going to end up higher on the inspection fees than we have in previous years. Office supplies postage are self-explanatory. Street repairs are one that everyone is always concerned about. We've kept that the same at a hundred thousand. Our Public Works Director, you know, will be working with engineers on which roads to put in this. Right now, I don't have specific roads and projects for that, but we wanted to make sure that we put that money in there because this is important to all of us. Mr. Ethan?
So does this indicate that we allocated a hundred thousand dollars for street repairs and we did not do any?
We have, well, okay. So remember, we had the emergency sewer repairs and we allocated about fifty thousand out of this to cover those emergency sewer repairs. What we have left in the current year is fifty. Our Public Works Director, you know, he's new, he's coming on. We've got some projects lined up to get to spend that fifty thousand dollars on. And so we are going to spend it before September thirtieth to address. We've got some specific places that we know are problematic that need to be fixed very quickly. And so we want to spend that fifty thousand and then allocate another hundred thousand for the upcoming year to continue improving the places that we know need to be fixed.
But wouldn't the expenses for the actuals, at the very least, show the fifty thousand that we moved?
It does show it in another line. So we've got to note the budget amendment. If you, it's an emergency repairs underwater sewer. And so when we get to that many pages back, you'll see that. And so we've got to button up the budget amendment to get it all looking the way it should on the budget, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty budget column. That hundred thousand really will be fifty thousand.
So then, so there's fifty thousand that got moved.
Yes.
It doesn't show up here. It shows up in the amendment. And so this over-under, the under is actually, at the moment, fifty thousand under, not a hundred thousand.
Correct.
Mr. Dinsmore is already planning on spending the other fifty thousand.
Correct.
So your over and under, your actuals, as it says at the top, year-to-date for June first.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, so you're correct. It's in there or the lines just look funny. Mayor Protem Priest, do you have a question?
I do. I just, I'm sure that we'll come across it and you'll explain it to me. But at the time that we took that action to borrow our fifty thousand from this pot to go repair and make the emergency repairs, that money came from an area where we really need to do that type of work in our community to keep, you know, to keep things up to standard. So as you worked on this budget for the upcoming year, do we have, have we given some consideration to those emergency things that come up so that we don't need to borrow from this line item again?
Yes.
You know, I'm trying to ask, are we, are we planning this next budget in a better way for those emergency situations that we know are always going to come up so that we don't have to borrow from something that's as important as this particular line item?
Yes, our Public Works Director worked very hard on his budget because, you know, he took a budget and he broke it apart in more detail for specific things. So he spent quite a bit of time. And when we get to the Public Works budget, you'll see there are more accounts. And he methodically went through there and put thought into different things that are needed. And as far as, you know, we did the emergency repairs on the sewer lines. Now, remember too, we've got the Eastside wastewater treatment plant expansion. And you heard the city engineers at the last meeting explain that there is some savings on the construction cost of that bond. And they've identified some piping, the clay piping in an area that feeds into the Eastside wastewater treatment plant. So that's part of the money. So we'll get those, that piping done, assuming council approves that project as part of that expansion. So we'll be spending money to address these things that we know will have problems. So in a way, that takes care of some of those emergency repairs as far as clay piping. But what the Public Works Director has done is put in different amounts. And we'll see here in just a little bit what he's done to address things that need to be fixed or have already been identified as problems on that capital improvement plan that the engineers put together, the master plan. Does that make sense? So yes, we do not want to be in the position we were in where we had to borrow from something that was just as important as what we repaired. So we are being diligent to avoid anything that we know will need to be replaced and then building some in there for that emergency that we just don't know about. You know, you don't know what you don't know, but we don't want to have to borrow again from ourselves like that. Next line item is dues and subscriptions. We bumped this up. Council approved, I believe it was the last council meeting, might have been the one before that, for software. You know, we've been doing the paper code compliance zoning permitting, all that's on paper. So now you have approved and we appreciate your support in getting that started, software that will track this electronically, which will make it much easier going forward, especially, you know, as we see growth. It'll take away from the paper trail that we have and put it in the electronic format. So we're excited to do that. So this number's bumped up a little bit. We need to do a little training on this new software and make sure the users of this know how to use it effectively. The final lines under building and development, medical retirement wages, expenses, these are all the allocation of the code compliance officer who also spends a portion of his time in public works. So we felt that that was right to allocate his time that he spends in code under the building and development department and take that out of the public works department. So that's his portion that's allocated to code compliance. See if we can see the true cost of that. All right, on to page H. This is municipal court. So a couple of things that we've changed. Most of it is similar to previous year's court fines. A portion of the court fines for some offenses get designated for certain funds, building insecurity being one and then court technology being one. And that money, while it's a part of the fine that the offender pays, it's restricted for certain purposes. So we decided to break out that revenue so we could show that restricted revenue. And then you'll see down the first line under expenses is building insecurity, thirteen fifty. That is the same amount that's collected under the revenue line up top. So we're showing how we expend those restricted funds for building insecurity. Also for court technology, you'll see an expense line down there for thirty-three hundred, which is the same as the revenue line up top for court technology. We've budgeted court fines in total at a little bit less. As you know, COVID, we have not had court since, I don't think we had court in March because COVID hit mid-March. So I think February is the last time we had court. We're hoping to get court started back in July. So our actual revenue is down just because we've not had court for those who want to appear before the judge. So we bumped that down just a little bit this upcoming year, not knowing what the effects long-term will be of COVID. Going down to the expenses, the next line that's of note is the collections expense line of thirty-nine thousand. So in twenty eighteen, I believe, no, it was twenty nineteen, we changed from one collection service to another Lion Barger. And they have a thirty percent collection fee. So any court fines that have gone into collections for non-payment, we've contracted with Lion Barger to try to collect those fines that are in collections. So, you know, if you owe a hundred dollars and Lion Barger works with you and you pay your fine of a hundred dollars, Lion Barger collects thirty percent as their fee and the city gets seventy percent. The way it was presented last year didn't show it to see what the true cost is to have that collection agency. So that thirty-nine thousand represents about a hundred and thirty thousand worth of collections revenue. That's their portion. But some of this is revenue that we might not collect and we don't have the staff to pursue the collections. So it's better to get seventy percent than get nothing. So that's something that we wanted to segregate out so we could see that expense. The next line, contract labor, that's the monthly contracted fee with the judge. Court technology, those are the restricted funds that are in the fines. Those are for things like the court software, computers for the court, things like that. Going down, office supplies postage, those are self-explanatory. State fees, thirty percent of the court fines that are up top, the four hundred nine thousand, those go to the state. So we subtract that out. And then there's education and training, dues and subscriptions, and then the benefits. You'll see those with the increases that we talked about. Legal fees, ten thousand, that's the prosecutor fee, the monthly fee. That can vary if we have several trials, then that can go up. But we budgeted that conservatively. And then wages over time, unemployment, Medicare, Social Security, those are all wages for the municipal court clerk. Any questions on court?
No.
All right, let's go on to page I. And we do have several of the department heads on the call as well. So if you have some specific questions, you know, we could definitely ask them. But to get through all this, I was just going to go through this. Unless you have some specific questions, we'll kind of hit the highlights on most of these. So page I starts the police department. The first line, impound lot fees. This, remember, we have tasked the city attorney with, working with the police chief on the process for closing the impound lot. So we budgeted with the expectation that the impound lot would be closed by September thirtieth of this year. So we didn't put anything in there. The next line, auction proceeds. The police chief has a vehicle that will age out and believes that auction, that that police vehicle can auction around sixty-five hundred. So that's where that comes from. Donations, we budgeted conservatively at zero because of COVID. You know, you just don't know how generous people are going to be. So we wanted to be conservative on that. The next line, we broke this out so we could show National Night Out, the sponsor revenue. And we also have the National Night Out expenses a few lines down. So you'll see both of those are at three thousand. So if they get three thousand in sponsor revenue, then they'll spend three thousand. If they only get two thousand in sponsor revenue, they'll only spend two thousand. So those offset each other. Miscellaneous income, these are, you know, crash reports, you know, miscellaneous fees that they get at the PD, minimal income on that. The next line, grants, that varies year-to-year. But if you look, we have a grant revenue line of fifteen hundred. And a few lines down, you'll see grant purchases of fifteen hundred. So those offset. If we don't get a grant, we won't spend it. Down to expenses, we've covered National Night Out. Contract labor, we budgeted the same for the cleaning of the PD offices and common areas. Grant purchases, we've gone over. Equipment repairs, equipment, those are budgeted the same. Note payments, this is the financing that I mentioned earlier. It's twenty-seven thousand is the payment for this year. And that's for body cameras, cameras in the patrol vehicles, desktop computers for all the PD offices. Replacing the laptops in the patrol vehicles. And also the purchase of one patrol vehicle, the Tahoe. So all of those roll up for that note payment there. Office supplies postage are self-explanatory. Education and training. New vehicle purchase, we've got it forty thousand. As part of the PD's portion of their budget cuts, they reduced that down from fifty. Typically, we've had fifty in there. They put it at forty because they believe they can purchase a vehicle similar to the Charger with all the police package and everything. It'll cost savings there. Vehicle repairs, budgeted the same. Gas and oil, we budgeted the same. Dues and subscriptions is the same. Impound lot expense, if the impound lot is closed, then we should not have any expenses related to that. Property insurance, liability insurance, those are our quarterly premiums. Medical, dental, retirement, all employee benefits. Building maintenance, we didn't budget anything last year, although we had to, I think we had to fix a door this year on the PD. We wanted to budget a little bit for just those minor repairs that would need to be made before we can move into the municipal complex. Telephone and internet, budgeted at seventy-five hundred. The preview, the current budget year, we budgeted a decrease of seven thousand due to potential savings from the bundling that the city administrators are working on. Technology, we budgeted fifteen hundred. We brought that down since we've replaced all the computers in the offices and in the patrol vehicles. We wanted to bring this down in case we need to replace a. replace a printer or something, um, other hardware that uh, may need replacement throughout the year. Uniforms and clothing, um, budgeted the same. Um, that will vary from year to year with the staffing. We bring new staffing on, we'll have to buy the new uniforms. Um, uniforms get old, they'll have to replace them for the current PD officers. Uh, utilities, gas and electric is the same. Hiring and testing expenses, that's the pre-employment screenings of a thousand. Um, for turnover, salary, wages, overtime, unemployment, Medicare, social security, those are all the payroll lines there. So that um, is the PD. Any questions on that? All right, on to page K. This is the fire department. Um, starting with donations, um, budgeted the same on donations and fundraisers. Um, these are typically pretty, pretty steady lines, um, year, year to year. So we kept that the same. Uh, the next line transfer from the general fund, the hundred-and-thirty-two-thousand, that's the one we referenced earlier, that um, is in the explanations over to the side, the, the three things that make that up. Tarrant County contract of eight thousand and Wise County contract of fifty-thousand-four-hundred, those are the mutual aid agreements where we get um, money from them to provide mutual aid. But in return, they also provide us with mutual aid, um, when we have uh, the need for that. Cost recovery, uh, budgeted the same. These are billable motor vehicle accidents. This is gonna vary year to year, the number of accidents. Um, so uh, we, we kept this the same. Uh, we've got some, some accidents that we need to submit that are in the works that we haven't received payment for yet. So we expect that actual number to change before the end of this budget year. And then uh, the final revenue line is grants of twenty-five thousand. Um, this has an expense line of twenty-five thousand in grants. As I said, if we don't get the grant, we don't spend it. Um, but we've got grants in for um, quite a few things, um, from apparatus to gear and training, wellness, um, grants, and then grants that cover the cost for our um, disability payments. Um, if, if a firefighter gets injured, we have a grant that covers a portion of that as well. All right, contract labor, um, that one we need to, to have a little explanation on. It, it's been fifteen hundred. Um, this year, the chief has put in twenty-five thousand five hundred. If you look at the note, it says shift, the shift work program. Um, it's an increase for this upcoming budget year at the request of council. Um, twenty-four thousand is that shift work program. And then fifteen hundred is the medical director who um, oversees our EMS program and uh, we work under his direction on EMS calls. Um, I, I think Captain Paul Thomas is on the line, um, to tell us a little bit more about the shift work program. Are you there, Captain Thomas?
Hi, is y'all here?
Yes, we can hear you.
All right, good evening, Council Mayor. So what we're looking to do for this next year is pay the members to actually be at the station. It's not an actual paid position because that would require uh, member, or benefits, insurance, anything like that. So what this is, is just, we pay the members for being there at the station and responding calls. You know, what we're working on is the command staff's gonna have to work on a schedule that makes it work financially with the city and our coverage. Believe in October, we're looking to start at three days a week. And that will revolve based on call volumes and what we've seen in the past and what we project for the future. And then hopefully by the end of the year, be up to five days with at least one member at the station.
Okay. So, so the fire department's not proposing to pay every member, but pay uh, a shift. Um, and eligible members can volunteer to fill a shift or pay. Um, it would be contract labor. A- as Captain Thomas said, they would not be employees. They would receive a ten ninety-nine at the end of the year. We wouldn't have to pay any benefits to them. Um, overall, with the fire chief, and, and he had a family commitment that he couldn't be here tonight. Mr. Reese, yes, sir?
So this is part of our ongoing project of trying to move our fire department to being a paid fire department. Step one was to have a part-time paid fire chief. And this, thi- this small start is the next step, next logical step. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Thank you, Paul.
This is the, the most financially responsible next step without actually hiring city employees that we'd have to pay benefits and insurance and all of that. This allows us to pay members that are currently with the department. So there would be no further training. Say a new member were to join, we wouldn't have to train to get them to the point where we would allow them to work shift. We can already use members we have. With them being contract labor, we don't have to necessarily adhere to the TCFP or National Registry or Texas Department of State Health Service standards as right now, which opens up our pool a lot to the members that we currently have.
So Captain, let me ask you. Um, we have volunteers right now and we appreciate that. Um, this is not a lot of money to go around. Um, does, do, do you, the assistant chief and the chief, um, do y'all work out a schedule and decide who's going to be working which, which shifts when? Um, and when, if you work a shift, does that mean that just, you're going to be there at the station?
Yes, sir. So how it'll work is we'll have a list of eligible members, those who have completed the probationary and all of what we require to meet our minimum standard. And we will rotate. So we, let's say, for example, the first week we do it, maybe like Monday, Wednesday, Friday. We would have one shift each of those days. We would open it up to the members to see who's interested. And as it goes on, we would keep it tally to make sure we are under what the workforce would require uh, benefits.
So it, it comes a volun- volunteer basis, but then just to actually choose who's gonna work what shift, that's gonna end up being you, the chief from the assistance group, right?
As far as who's eligible or who's deciding?
Who's going to actually work the shift? I assume that who's eligible comes down to who's actually completed, you know, the necessary training and hours, et cetera?
Right. What we require for our volunteers. So any volunteer who has completed all of what we require as a department, they would be eligible. So it could be a firefighter or an officer. We would still have them, like myself, our chief would still be available to run calls with them. But that, this way, we ensure we made our rapid response and try to meet that three to five minute standard.
Okay, I'm just, I, I'm just trying to make sure that there's something in place to make sure, to, so that it will be equitable, so that there's a nice even distribution of working these shifts.
Yes, sir. And that's something that we have to work out as a command staff to ensure there's no favoritism or people think that they're not being picked for whatever reason. There would be a, uh, we would try to keep it even among the members who are interested.
Thank you.
And this would also help with your retention. Maybe one day we can keep these officers and we are able to have a full-time department.
Yes, sir. That is another goal and idea is we don't want to hire necessarily outside of the department if we don't have to, when we do go paid. So if we can maintain the membership we have, providing these paid shifts, that'll help in the long run.
I have a question. This is Elaine. Um, so in, in this, through this program, um, I know the chief does a lot of runs. Um, and, and he always says because he's next door and all that kind of stuff. But is, but is this program gonna give him a little bit of relief? Or is there gonna be some others so he doesn't have to go out so often?
That is the idea, as much as he'll let us give him relief. But that is, that is our idea where he can actually go on vacation and not have to worry about. The end goal for us is to keep the quality and the standard of care for our citizens that we've worked very hard over the last few years to get to. And by having somebody staffed at the station, it definitely makes it easier for him to go on a vacation or even go to uh, Keller if he needs to go to Home Depot or something to run up.
Mayor, I have a que- I have another question about this, Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Is this, is this an area where, uh, if anybody wanted to donate to this program, where, where that would be allowable?
Um, we have a don- we, we accept donations. Um, people can donate and restrict their donations. Um, so if they send a check and they write for, you know, a specific program, then we are required to utilize those funds for the programs specified. So yes, we could take donations. They're restricted just for that program.
It's not like, uh, you know, every item on the fire department is, is worthwhile, absolutely and needed. But I, I was just asking if that also fell in that category?
Yes.
So thank you.
Can accept that. Um, one thing that's not noted on here, we did, well, we, we've gotten a skeleton of a four-year budget. Um, I'll have that for you at the next council meeting. Um, so you can see what we're projecting these next four years. And within that shift work program, um, the idea is to have that evolve year over year. So this year, it would be one paid shift for, for the designated times, um, once those are determined. The next budget year would be for two people on paid shifts. So then we would have the, the basic crew that could run an EMS call. Um, if nobody else showed up as a volunteer, that crew could handle that call. Um, and then the third year is uh, projected to have one paid firefighter along with the two shift work people to build on that. So now we have three in the third year. The fourth year, you would have three paid firefighters. Um, and you would be able to cut back on that shift program back to one, and you would have a full crew of four, uh, that could run calls. Um, and that thought process is in line with development and rolling B. Um, that, um, if their expectation for service level increases as they're building, then um, we have an agreement that we can come to the table and see, um, if they want more services, that uh, they would help fund those services that they want. So we're kind of uh, thinking that the timing of that over the next four years will get us to a combination department. Another plus, um, that, uh, the, the difference in your ISO, which is the rating that the city gets, that will um, impact your homeowner's insurance, what you pay. Um, we're at a four right now. And the difference between going to a four and a three is having that combination department, having some paid people, because the caterer just went to a three. So if we want to pay less in our homeowner's insurance, this is a step we're gonna have to progress toward over a reasonable amount of time. Um, any, any other questions on that for Captain Thomas? Okay, if not, we'll, we'll let him go and run calls. We appreciate you being on the line. Thank you.
Yes, thanks for having me. Good night.
Um, all right, let's, let's go on down and work through the fire department budgets. Um, grant purchases, we've already covered. Equipment, um, we've brought that down a little bit as part of the budget cuts. Uh, fire department found uh, different accounts where they could uh, reduce, um, to cut down on the expenses. The fire safety program is another place, uh, we brought down a little bit, um, from the previous budget year. Those are uh, community outreach programs. Uh, the majority of that is for the outreach during fire prevention weekend in October for the elementary school. Uh, with COVID, you, you know, and some of the unknowns, we're not sure how that program will look in the fall. Um, but we would love to continue that program and community outreach. The next line, note payments. Um, you will see that, um, note payments have gone up from forty-one thousand four hundred and one dollars to seventy-five thousand three hundred and eighty-three dollars. If you look in the explanations over to the right, uh, those are three note payments total. This current budget year, we have, have a payment of twenty-five thousand for engine three. We have a nearly sixteen thousand payment for the rescue. And then uh, this upcoming budget year, we have added the financing for the SCBA packs that council approved, the packs with bottles, uh, and the cascade system, the, the system that refills those bottles. So that is the accounting for the increase. That's a thirty-three thousand increase. Um, one thing to note, this current budget year, we will make additional payments on the engine. Um, and the plan is with the payment, additional payments that we make this year on the, on engine three, and we will be able to have that engine paid off next budget year, um, within budget. So um, to get that payment off in twenty-twenty-two, in that budget year, we'll bring this back down, um, to around fifty going forward. Um, and that will also free up, you know, the ability to look at uh, the next engine when it's needed, uh, along with the replacement program that the, the chief has. All right, going through support crew and supplies, we brought that down. Uh, apparatus, brought that down two thousand. Uh, office supplies is the, uh, the same. We go on to page L. The incentives, uh, program that was used to recruit and retain qualified volunteers has been nine thousand. We brought that down a thousand and rolled that money up into the shift program. Um, the fire department believes that they shouldn't ask for more money from the council if they're not willing to pony up some of their money toward that program as well. Um, education and training, uh, the fifteen hundred is the same. This is education and training that's not paid for by grants. Uh, the majority of our training is a hundred percent covered by grants, so uh, we don't frequently have expenses in that. Um, but the fire chief too has some required training that we have to do that's not covered by grants, and that's in that number. Gas and oil, we have brought down, that fluctuates based on the number of calls. Um, subscriptions and the next line dues, those have been combined in the past, all under dues and subscriptions one line, which is the ninety-five hundred that you see in the first column for this current year. Um, we think it's a truer picture to, to break out what is dues and what is subscriptions. Um, dues relate to certifications, um, and organizations that, um, members are part of, uh, to maintain a certain level of, um, uh, their certifications up to an acceptable level for the needs. Um, apparatus, the note purchase, uh, we brought that down from fifty thousand to twenty-five thousand. That twenty-five thousand is used to cover a big portion of that financing for that note payment for the SCBA bottle. So we've just reallocated a portion of that. Um, the next few lines, insurance, property, liability, retirement, disability, uh, those are self-explanatory. Building maintenance, um, just some general maintenance, brought that down to a thousand. Um, telephone and internet, brought that down a little bit. That's, that's the anticipated savings by bundling. Technology, um, reduced that just a little bit as well. Uniforms and clothing is the same. Utilities, we've brought that down just a little bit based on actuals. Um, we've relocated some heaters and uh, you know, have got more efficient use of the, the utilities that we have. Salaries, state unemployment, Medicare, social security, those are all the wages, um, for the part-time fire chief. Uh, EMS supplies, budgeted, um, flat, uh, COVID for, um, supplies that we need for COVID, increase in mask counts, PPE. The county is going to use, um, their funding that they received, uh, federal funding, a- and they are giving all the fire departments and police departments what they need for COVID. And they are giving all the fire departments and police departments what they need for COVID, so we don't have to budget an increase in that. If COVID continues to flare up, if it comes back in the fall, we will have what we need from the county. And we appreciate their support in that respect. Banquets and service awards, this is the annual employee volunteer recognition program, budgeted flat. All the other lines are just future, future lines, that we don't have anything for the current proposed budget. All right, so on to page M. We're going to move on to the parks budget. The parks board met and they wanted to keep everything the same as the current budget year. When we had all the requests in and we had to do the cut on that three hundred to four hundred thousand dollar cut. We brought the transfer from the general fund down a thousand dollars from nineteen to eighteen. And that is part of what we mentioned earlier, that was the ten thousand dollars for an unspecified capital project and maintenance on the project, the parks. If you look through there, you'll see that ten thousand under contract labor. We haven't specified yet, so whether contract labor is the appropriate place for it to land, when we approve the budget, we'll kind of decide that. Family park, four thousand, veterans park, a thousand, maintenance by public works for the parks is two thousand and utilities is a thousand. All right, let's go on to page N. This will start the public works budget. And remember, this budget is the only department that, as a standalone, the revenue and expenses, the expenses should not be more than the revenue. So going through here, meter deposit income, that account is really, it's not income in the sense that we make anything off of that. That's just deposits that people pay when they open an account. When they close the account, they get the full amount back if their bill is paid in full. So it's not income. So we didn't budget anything in that this year, and we're going to count for that a little differently in our budgeting. Tap fees, we increased that to fifty thousand with development coming online. We think we're going to see an increase in that as far as the tap fees. The next three lines, water charges, sewer charges and garbage charges typically have been rolled all together in one line, water sewer charges. We want to break those out going forward, so we can see what are we really bringing in for water? What are we really bringing in for sewer? And what are we really bringing in for garbage? The public works director has, has broken out his expenses accordingly, so we can see, is the water rate that we're charging, the water that we're collecting, is that covering what it really costs for our water system? We want to do the same thing for the sewer. The garbage collection, it's a pass-through cost. So waste connections, we collect for them and we turn around and give them that money. So we don't make anything off of that money. We are just making it more streamlined for our residents to receive one bill instead of a bill for water and sewer and a bill for trash. But we want to break that out so we can make sure that we are accounting for that properly. Combined, we budgeted an increase for all three, added together to a million forty-five. This current year, we're at nine hundred and seventy-five thousand with development coming online in 2021. We think that we're going to see an increase, so I believe that was seventy thousand increase in the budget numbers. The water tower lease is flat. This is, we have some antennas and things up on top of the water tower, and that's where you see that they're renting space, if you will. And that's what that income is. Mislangue's income, we brought down, that's, that's very minimal. So we wanted to bring that more in line with what truly comes in there. Interest income is just the revenue off of the bank accounts that we have, so that's minimal income. Going on to the expenses, you're going to see the bond principal of seventy thousand and the bond interest expense of ninety-eight, one twenty-six. This is the interest and principal due on the East Side wastewater treatment plant bond. So we've got that factored in there. Going down, water sewer chemicals, we're actually splitting it out. So this actually, we highlighted sewer is red, because that's not really sewer, that's going to be water chemicals. You'll see down later in the expenses that there is a sewer chemical line item. Emergency repairs, we didn't put anything in here in this line. Public Works Director has broken out some other lines further down. Also, you know, the East Side wastewater treatment plant, the clay pipes, if we replace a good portion of those that feed into that East Side plant, then that will minimize some of those types of emergency repairs. As we go down, you'll see he's budgeted for things like, you know, the lift station, if that goes out, he's got money budgeted in here if we have to replace something there as an emergency. The AMR cell fee per connection fee, we budgeted sixty-five hundred. This is going to be one of two items on here that I want to put out for your thought. You don't have to, you know, make a decision or take a position tonight, but I want you to think about this. Originally, when we budgeted this the last year, this is the automatic meter readers to, for us to have that connection with the internet, where you can see your usage online. The initial plan was that the city would pay for it the first year, but then in subsequent years, we would pass that on to the customer, because it's, it was eighty-nine cents a customer, eighty-nine cents for each meter. We've included that in this budget this year, but think about that and whether that's something that we need to pass on to the consumer, because we're not getting any more revenue to cover that. The other one that goes along with that thought, if you go down just a little bit, credit card fees. For this current budget year, we've got twelve thousand budgeted. Our actuals, we've got a few that aren't recorded in there, so the actual's a little bit higher. We didn't put anything in the budget for this coming up here. Yes, Mr. Eason?
Your comment about the automated or automatic meter reader cell fee per connection, eighty-nine cents per household? I would like to see that rolled into everyone's bill. Just in case, I don't realize we're not going to take a vote or anything right now, I just wanted to ask that along.
Okay.
It is quite a convenience. I feel like, since I got my automatic meter reader, I feel like my water bill's gone down.
Okay.
Just clarify, it is eighty-nine cents per month.
Per month, thank you. Yes, so, yeah, so it's almost twelve dollars a year for customer.
I don't think that's unreasonable to pass it on and save that money for the city.
Right. Let me tie some of these things together real quick to give you some food for thought. So credit card fees, the council approved in the municipal court to pass the credit card processing fee, it's a convenience fee, to pass that on to the offender. We did not do that for our water sewer. So the city has been paying for that convenience fee for the customers who pay with a credit card. And not everybody pays credit card, some people pay cash or check. But that, that's something that we're not charging any more revenue on our water bill to cover. So we're basically subsidizing that and having less for those things like the emergency repairs. We're not able to, to cover everything. And so one of the things that the public works director would like to do, and our engineers are recommending, is that we do a rate study on our water and our sewer. And look at what our rates are, you know, compared to other places, you know, what it should be. To let us know where our rates fall and where they should fall for you to consider. That's something we're going to complete in this budget year. Yes, Mr. Eason?
I feel like the fee has to be paid. I mean, if it's paid by the city, it's still the taxpayers that have to pay it. So I just assume the people that are using that credit card convenience, they're the ones getting the convenience. They should pay the fee, because it's going to come out of the citizens. If we have a way of, of passing the cost directly on to the person gaining the convenience. So like the meter meter fee, I would also like to see the credit card fee.
And you're right, if you think about it, those customers who pay with a check or with cash, they're, they're not getting that extra benefit. Only the people who pay with credit card are getting that benefit, so we're really not treating everybody the same. And you're right, either, either we, as a city, pay that or we pay it in property taxes, you know.
It's going to get paid.
It's going to get paid one way or another, correct.
As long as you keep remembering that all of this money is taxpayer money.
Right.
All of it's taxpayer money.
Right. So that's something I want, I want council to think about. Are those, the AMR fees, the eighty-nine cents per month, per meter? And then the credit card fees, because that has an impact on the budget. You know, if we don't charge for either one of those, if the city's not going to pay for that anymore and it's going to get passed on to the customer, then on this budget, you know, the water sewer will show a savings of sixty-five hundred, because that will be zero for the city. But the end user, customer, will bear that cost instead of the city. And then, you know, Public Works Director's going to work on the rate study to present something to council at a future date. So have those two things, yes, ma'am?
I would just interject too, if you look at, I mean, businesses, of course, we all know this, we, we are, the fee is passed along to the consumer. But when you look at other cities, the very common practice to, it's as a convenience fee that is passed along to those that are taking advantage of that convenience. So it's not out of the normal, it's not unusual.
Right. And the customers still have the option to pay with cash or check and not be charged that fee. So if, you know, it's an income-sensitive situation, then they do have that option to not pay that fee. All right, let's go back up to engineering. We budgeted a little bit more this year, seventy thousand. We got the water rate study here, but we do have that for this year. So we were trying to figure out if we were going to be able to get it done before the end of the budget year. But that cost is estimated at forty thousand. Other projects that are going on throughout the city, want to budget it up for engineering, because we do need their input on drainage. There are several different things that are going to be needed with engineers. So we budgeted a small increase on that. Note payments, the six thousand is just the truck payments, the monthly payment, that's a year's worth. Office supplies, postage, that's self-explanatory. Education and training, that's continuing education certifications for our staff. Vehicle repairs and maintenance, we've brought that down a little bit. Gas and oil, brought that down a little bit as well. We've already covered credit card fees, dues and subscriptions, a slight decrease from previous year. Equipment rentals, another slight decrease. Property insurance, medical, dental, retirement, these are all ones that are given to us. Building maintenance, just general basic maintenance, if something needs to be taken care of, a thousand dollars. Telephone and internet, we budgeted flat for them, for their particular department. Won't see as much savings, because we've gotten a couple of different vendors on them. So they won't see as much savings as the other departments on that. Uniforms and clothing, bringing that up a little bit to make sure we're covering all the employees and the things that they have to handle in their day-to-day duties. Utilities and gas, we brought this up as well. That's all locations, it's not just the main public works office building, it's, it's the sewer plant. You know, it's, it's the lift stations, things like that. Hiring and testing expenses, that's just pre-employment. Screenings, salary wages over time, unemployment, Medicare, social security, those are all the wages that we talked about already. Garbage service, this is where we pay waste connections. If you'll notice, this eighty-two, eight hundred is exactly the same as the revenue on the previous page, because that's a pass-through. What we collect is what we turn over to waste connections. License impairments, budgeted flat. Shop supplies, a slight decrease, these are within the shop. And then if you'll look, the next lines or the new lines, these are the, let's see, these are the water supplies. The water testing, so these are where he's separating this out. Sean, I need to make sure I have the naming on the accounts right, as far as water sewer, I may have gotten this mixed up. Walnut Creek, that's our big expense for the public works department. As most of you know, the majority of our water that we get is purchased water, and it's purchased from Walnut Creek. So we're budgeting an increase. You know, it depends on the demand of the residents, you know, if we have a drier summer, you know, the, the demand for water may be higher than in rainy seasons. Tap expenses, this is budgeting zero, because he's included this in other accounts. Other expenses, we didn't budget anything, this is generally non-recurring things. If we have an insurance claim, we get some expenses related to that insurance claim, that's typically what you'll see here. Next line, sewer testing, this is a new account to account for sewer testing. And then the next line, sewer line maintenance. This is pipe fittings, manholes, manhole rings, lids, so this is a new line for that maintenance. You'll see another line, equipment repairs and maintenance, for the different mowers, dump trucks, chainsaws, backhoes, weed eaters, those kinds of things need to be fixed. And maintained, groundwater production fee, this is a new account. And this is fees paid to the groundwater district for groundwater pumped. Cost based off of a repayment average, increased ten percent, cover the rate and production increase. And then you'll see sewer chemicals, three thousand, this is just separated. Technology, this is just for hardware that might be needed, you know, tablets, printers, you know, things like that that'll come up. The next line is water meter transmitter, this is for new meters and a transmitter for new construction. And then the following page, page P, lift station maintenance, we've got it budgeted eight thousand here. We need to replace a pump at the west plant, it's estimated at six thousand, and that leaves a little bit in there for other maintenance. And then you'll see the well tank meter vault maintenance of five thousand for tank inspections and cleaning and maintenance. So it's more accounts, but our public works director has taken some of the line items that hit bigger numbers in the previous budget year, and he broke it down into more descriptive accounts. That give more transparency to what's going on and where the money's being spent. Any questions on that?
I have a question, this is Elaine.
Yes, ma'am.
You mentioned the fact that there was going to be a rate study for the actual expenses related to water and wastewater. I was just wondering if during that study, if they would also look on the income side, or does somebody else do that? One of the things that we have in our fee structure in the wastewater is based on, on water, what's water that's been purchased. And then we do a percentage adjustment for the sewer part, and then we put a cap of fifty bucks. So my question is, a lot of communities are going to getting away from the percent. a lot of communities are going to getting away from the percentage of what has been purchased in water in order to calculate sewer. Instead, they use what they call a winner averaging. Might be December, January, February. It might be October through March. With getting away from the cap, then you're able to, through the averaging process, have a more accurate picture of what's actually going into the wastewater system. But it also helps identify those residents and businesses that are exceeding in actual calculations above the cap. And so we lose revenue sometimes by having that cap in place. Does that make sense? Did I say that right?
Yes. And Sean, are you familiar with what Mayor Protim is talking about, about the averaging for the sewer?
Yeah, yes, ma'am. That's what we previously did was the winner average. And she's correct, it's usually like a December, January, February. And it's basically an average across all residential. Commercial will not be the average. Commercial will be charged as is by per gallon, per thousand gallons that they've taken. And so this will only be considered for a residential average.
Okay.
Okay. Well, I just, I've just done a little bit of research on that for another reason. But it seemed that it would very possibly identify more revenue actually. You know, it's not going to be everybody, but some, number one. And number two, it might cut down on some of our, might simplify some of our billing efforts to our customers by having the averaging in place, which is redone annually at the end of the averaging period every year. So...
Yes, and this will, yes. Yes, this will also help with people that have irrigations that are on their domestic meter where it will not be calculated during the summertime for that usage for their sewer since it's not going down the sewer system. That's why it's during the wintertime because normally no one usually irrigates during the wintertime.
So would that be a part of the study? Or is that something that we would need to investigate on in another way?
That'd be a council's wish. We can add it into our study. But that would be a council's wish on changing the ordinance to the winner average. So that'd be up to y'all to consider.
We want to be sure that it supported our budget, you know. We definitely would want that. Then the rate would be the variable, but we want that to be sure and meet our budget needs as far as expenses, that's for sure.
Yes, the rate will be adjusted to that average and will most likely do, probably do like a, try to go back two to three years to see what possibly the average is for those months to try to get a baseline for that, start off that number.
Okay. Thanks a lot.
Okay. And you know, the rate study is important because what we're typically when, you know, and I know it's unpopular when people hear it and I know council doesn't like to have to make those decisions. But when Walnut Creek, our purchased water charges the city more for that water, we pass that on to the customers just to pass through increase. Well, over the years since I've been involved, the increases that have come to our customers have only been the Walnut Creek rate increases. We've never looked at our costs for any kind of inflation adjustment or what it costs to maintain the system excluding the actual use of the water. So the rate study is important to see, are we covering what it really costs to have the water in the sewer separately? But we don't want to just arbitrarily pick a number and expect the taxpayers to pay it without some kind of engineering documents that support. These are the costs to run your system and to fairly and equitably distribute that among the users of the system. So the rate study is how we can do that.
And also we'll be also considering the rate study is also our water and wastewater master plan. We have capital projects that we have to fund. And if we do not create enough revenue to fund those projects, then water and wastewater master plan, you know, is not a benefit because we're not funding those projects.
So food to think about as far as the budget. And there's some more information on some of the things that our Public Works Director has been, you know, considering and has recognized the things that need to do, we do need to get done. Any questions on that, on Public Works? Okay, so we've gone through all the departments. Are there any questions on any specific departments from the council? Mr. Eason?
Last year, and I think it was October, November time, we had discussed that we would like to have the city staff investigate hiring a CPA firm for doing the budget. And I didn't see a line item for that. And I haven't heard that report from the city staff. And I realized we had a turnover in city administrator. And I'm worried that that may have fallen through the cracks.
You are correct. We did, we have not included that. And you're right, we did receive that request from council to include that. I believe that came from council member Crenshaw initially, but was supported by the council as a whole. So we will put that on our list of items to go back and amend after tonight's meeting.
Thank you.
I would like to add to that. When we were hiring our new administrator, that was part of the things that we looked at was was our new administrator having a lot of budget experience so that the administrator could take over and take a bigger role in that effort so that the mayor could begin to back out of it. So we may not have it in the budget now, but that was part of the criteria that we used whenever we did the field position of Cynthia. And she does, she does have a lot of budget planning background.
That's a good point. Good point, Elaine.
Well, it's very also important for the people of the city to know exactly how much money they've been saving. But you know, that's not going to last forever. I really would like to see this included in the budget.
Okay. We will do that. You know, as Mayor Protim said, our city administrator does have experience in this. And so, you know, has definitely had a part in the budget that you see, the proposed budget that you see right now. But I think to Mr. Crenshaw's point, he would like a confirmation from an outside impartial third party to say, you know, this is a reasonable budget based on the information that they provided, the protections that they're providing us, to have assurance when we go to the taxpayers and say, this is, this is what our budget is going to be. This is going to be your property tax rate. This is going to be your water rate. We want that impartial person to say this is reasonable and make sure that we're spending appropriately. And if we're not, we've got somebody that will tell the council otherwise.
Yeah, I mean, we're not going to be blessed to have a mayor that is also a CPA forever. I just think it'd be prudent planning to do that.
Yes, and any CPA would be fine with somebody checking their work and, you know, for reasonableness. That is very common practice. So anyone who's offended by that probably has an ulterior motive.
Yeah.
So we will work on that one. Are there any other items that you did not see in the budget or that you had hoped we would address in the budget in any of the departments, any projects? And if you, since you just got this today, I know you haven't had a lot of time to digest this. If you can spend some time looking at that, considering all the discussion that went on tonight. If you have items or, you know, you've got constituents and there are things that they bring to your attention that you feel are important, you would give us some feedback. Let's see, today is June 11th. Our next council meeting is on June 25th. If you could give us feedback within the next week, so by June 18th, email the city administrator ideas, comments, concerns. If you think of something, email her. So we have time to look at the budget that we've got proposed before you and make adjustments. So when we get to our next meeting, we're going to publish a public hearing for them to provide comment on the first proposed budget. So if you will do that for us, that would be helpful. The last few pages, I'm not going to go over in detail, but I just want to tell you generally what they are. Page R is the accounting for the 2017 tax note from when it was first started to now. That's what is being used to finish up the design on the municipal complex. So that's where that funding is coming from, but we wanted to provide that to you. Did I skip? Hold on, I think I skipped a page. Q, I'm sorry, if you go to Q. That one is the bond, the 2019 bond for the Eastside Wastewater Treatment Plant. So that's the accounting for that where we're at right now. And then page R is the 2017 tax note. So we wanted to make sure you had that in hand so you know what has been spent where and you're informed on that. Then item, page numbers S and T go together. These, this is a recap of capital request and expenditures for this current budget year. Well, yeah, this current budget year, sorry. Things that we purchased, amount that was requested, what we actually spent. So that's just a recap of those items. So you know what we've spent money on and how much. And then the last three pages, U, B, and W are the larger purchase budget request, new staff positions for the next four years. So take a look at that. So you know what the department heads are looking to forward, forward-thinking on what some of the needs are. So spend some time on that. If you have some questions, you can email the city administrator. And then we can kind of go over any particular questions that you have. Or at the next council meeting, bring your questions back and we'll provide the answers in, you know, the open public forum.
Thank you for putting those last three pages together. I really think that our ultimate charge is not just the day-to-day business, but long-term planning. You talk about legacy and as we give money. But as far as the city council and as the group that we work together, this long-term planning is our legacy. And I just, I think, I take it very seriously that we are looking at things like growing our fire department and doing it in such a way that it's organized, it's stretched out, it's planned, and it's all about reasonable growth. And so I thank you for doing this.
Well, I am just, I am the one who prepared the file. The numbers, the requests, those all come from the department heads who manage their departments. They know what the needs are. They are thinking forward about what is coming down the pipe. And so really, this information comes from them. I just facilitate putting it all together to give it to you in the format that you see before you. So really, they're the ones that have done the hard work in, you know, thinking that through on what we need.
Well done on everyone's part then.
All right. If there are no questions, like I said, email the city administrator, comments, questions, things that you want to see in there over the next week that you, as you go through that. So if we are done with the discussion on that, we will entertain a motion to adjourn our meeting.
You have it.
Thank you. Do I have a second on that motion?
Yes, you have that too.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, Councilmember McCabe.
Aye.
Councilmember Crenshaw.
Aye.
Mayor Protim Priest.
Aye.
Councilmember McCosky.
Your mute button works.
Aye.
All right, we got an aye. And then Councilmember Eason.
Aye.
All right. Motion carries. Our meeting is adjourned at nine sixteen PM.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
In person, right? I appreciate, no questions.
Thank you, Chief.
Hey, Mayor. Are we looking, are we looking to have our next meeting in person?